Futures.
Okay, right here.
Yeah.
Good evening, members of the Santa Cruz Valley Unified School District number thirty-five Governing Board. My name is John Fanning and I stand before you today with a sense of purpose and dedication to our community's future. As you may already know, I am a candidate for District Three County Supervisor. And I'm here to share with you my unwavering commitment to supporting education. Our schools are the heart of our community, shaping the minds and futures of our children. As a parent, educator, and community member, I understand the vital role that education plays in preparing our youth for success and in building a strong and vibrant community. If elected as your county supervisor, I pledge to prioritize education as a fundamental cornerstone of our community's well-being. Within my power, I will advocate for increased funding for our schools, ensuring that our educators have the resources they need to provide a high-quality education to every student, regardless of their background or circumstances. I will work tirelessly to support initiatives that promote academic excellence, innovation, and student success. Whether it's expanding access to early childhood education, investing in STEAM programs, or providing support services for students with special needs, I will be a champion for policies that empower our students to reach their full potential. Furthermore, I recognize the importance of collaboration and partnership between the county and our school district. I am committed to fostering open lines of communication, working collaboratively with educators, administrators, parents, and students to address the challenges facing our schools and to identify solutions that best serve the needs of our community. In closing, I want to express my gratitude for the incredible work that each of you does when we have of our students in schools. Your dedication and service to our community are truly commendable. And I look forward to the opportunity to work together to build a brighter future for our children and our community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, and good luck.
And good luck.
Any other comments in public? All right, our two study session, subject A, policy review.
Yes, I got. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Kramer, you had proposed. One of them, you wanna? Go over yours.
I thought they're kind of like integrated, right? Some wording, just verbiage.
So, two that I got in front of me was, uh, JK, the Joe Kramer, and BB. Uh, the main thing there is what I saw, let me see. Let's permit is. One. We'll go over Mr. Kramer first. The big one is, uh, exception, uh, cell phones may be allowed for specific educational purposes determined by school administration. And I think that's a major difference, is that an administrator can say yes or no. Uh, some of the literature that I've been reading is if you ban cell phones, it's a ban. Uh. You can't give teachers or administrators leeway to determine when they should be used. So, as a teacher, I can say, well, I need to use cell phones in this instance. And that's not a ban, according to the stuff I've been reading, okay? Administrators giving them the power to say, yes, Mr. Beech, you can, or no, you can't. Well, I know my, I know my subject area, the principal doesn't. Okay, so why should she or he, uh, tell me whether I can use it or not? And I think it puts the principals in a situation where it might be biased, well, he let Mr. Beech use it, but not such and such. And now we get that little discussion among the teachers, well, it's because, you know, the principal likes this person. Or, yeah, I can see where both our lessons were the same, you got to use it and you did it. So I think, uh, just an all-out ban on cellphone use, uh, I would recommend based on what I, what I've read in the literature, okay? Uh. On the one I proposed, it's still low on the totem pole, I think one. I think this is like step.
What's that?
Uh, this one right here, this is the first one. Okay. So, the policy that, that I proposed, it goes through different steps, it's what I think is the step two on not an all-out ban of students leaving them, like Mr. Ramirez in a locker, or when they walk into school, put them into a couch of some sort and clean them up after school, that's like level four or five. Which some schools are doing. So, I propose going maybe at a two, that's mean how it goes next year, before we either uh, make it more restrictive or less restrictive. Okay, so that's the only thing I saw on Mr. Kramer's proposal, uh, which was giving the administrators, uh, the leeway. And I think there's always a gray area. And when I say a gray area, it'd be like almost common sense, like, okay, the hockey's dance team is making a promotional video. We're gonna turn the lights down on the gym, everybody, this might be the first time, the last time, get your phones out, I want you to turn on the camera, or the uh, the lights like a concert, little Taylor Swift. And, you know, make a nice promotional video, video. Yeah, of course. I do it down in our, uh, school down, down in O'Gallus, where I do a heart rate lab. And we gotta time it together, running two minutes, we take the resting, the active, and we find out how quick it returns to the resting heartbeat. I don't like the kids to take the computers on the track, because I have a hundred and eighty students, sixty computers, one of them's gonna fall. Okay, so ask the principal, you mind in this instant if I, I, we can use our cell phones, the timer's on the cellphone. No problem, we go out and do that app. But those are outliers. You know, our policy still states that it's a cellphone ban during the, during the school, school day, not after school. And it just makes it streamlined. Administration isn't put in a situation where they're saying yes or no to cell phones. The teachers are not put in that situations, but there's always gonna be one or two outliers where a teacher or administrator, hey, I have to use it. Okay, so that's the only two, uh, differences that I see, one with the administration, giving the administration sort of leeway. And this one's more cut and dry. Uh, the second thing that I see is the first offense, second offense, third offense. I don't know what the offenses are on this one. Or the current offenses that, uh, recommendation, I, I don't see a third, third one here in front of me, but. So, the first offense on the BB one. Teacher administrators confiscate cellphone and bring it to the main office where it'll be kept for a long week, parents will be notified and must come to school at the end of to retrieve the cellphone, phone may not be returned directly to the student. Someone said that, that's sort of a, a hard, uh, first offense, you know, why not just one day? But if you remember, usually a teacher has already told that student, hey, hey, put away the phone. Okay, they probably warn that students two or three times, well, probably two times, the third time, it's in the office. So it's not the first attempt, and that's out of respect for the student, I think most teachers are like that. You know, such and such, may you pu- put away the phone? You know, no, no, not in your back pocket, in your backpack, like the policy states. And the students, we have great students, they usually, they, I apologize, Mr. Beech, and it goes in the backpack. Okay, so the offenses, second offense, it goes a little more, more strict, and then the third offense. So I would recommend this policy. And I would probably, I like how this was worded, the purpose, and down below, here are the key steps for Rico High School can take to affect, to affect of the enforced cellphone policy. Add it to that. It's open for discussion. I know a lot of the principals are like, well, how are we gonna store the cellphone, then what if we lose it? Uh, and that's, should be discussed also. That, that's where I'm at right now, uh. Doing a total cell, cellphone ban during the school day afterward, yeah, activities and stuff, break them out.
Um, Mr. Beech?
Yes.
Just, just so that the group is aware, um, and the student code of conduct, um, under, um, consequences for discipline and actions, number twenty-two of cell phones. So, um, it references Mr. Kramer's reference, um. It will be, and the school discipline matrix, it would be twenty-two, which is confiscation, parent pickup, and that's the way it reads today.
Okay. Let me see.
On your, on twenty-two. If you go through the discipline section of the handbook, and then to the keep going, keep going. The discipline matrix that Mr. Kramer is referring to is number twenty-two, which is right here.
Okay.
It says confiscation, parent pickup, that's what's currently in.
Okay, so the first offense would be, uh, uh, confiscation, parent pickup?
Correct.
Okay.
As, as it reads right now, um, that's what it currently, even this year, is confiscation, parent pickup, it's always been an option. Um, the maximum is suspension, um, but you can see under max. Just so everyone's aware how those go together, because we would not write a separate, we, those consequences would be embedded in the matrix.
So for third, fourth, fifth consequence, we can still confiscate all the parent.
No, um, as, as it start, as it progressively gets worse, see where it says max, suspension, suspension, you have the option to suspend.
Okay.
And they have the option to suspend at any point, if they, if the. Like to, um, the minimum is confiscation and parent pickup, the maximum is confiscation and, um, suspension.
Yeah.
So it allows, you know, it, what it does is it affords the administrator the ability to use any mitigating factors that they choose to, because we use a progressive model.
Yeah, I was just trying to, because we spent ten hours on this. Already. Been all Saturday. This stuff, and certainly Mr. Beech was great, did write precise stuff, and I was just trying to kind of summarize and follow like what we already have in place. Certainly, and I think you and I agree, and mine's a lot more verbiage. Attorneys like that sometimes, but. Um, I think the offenses that were, and the consequences, certain as. I can learn those spelled out, we already have it in place, it's ready to go. The admin, the whole thing, as you said, we disagreed on was administration. And I was only thinking of the times and just as of right now, tonight, it will be a perfect example, our laptops weren't ready to go. If I am a teacher, and I want to get into my classroom, and all of a sudden I see the red lights, which happened many times over this past year, granted, it didn't happen the last two months, but again, if perchance that that happens, and it's a very important day of some sort of matter, I would, if I was teaching government, I'd have my principal say, hey, my red lights are on, I'm not getting the internet, we were gonna do things right now. I can supervise these kids, we're gonna break out our cell phones. Hopefully, me as that teacher, responsible enough to the principals, where I can do this. Now again, you, we, we've talked about this before too, where the good cop, bad cop song, and then you have teachers abusing that privilege and saying, oh, yes, I'm doing it, oh, yeah, you can do it, oh, don't worry, I understand that, Rob, I understand exactly what you're saying too. Because then it becomes not even policy anymore, where, oh, our English teacher gets to use it all the time, because she's doing this, and she has this, and this, and this. Well, I think the IT needs to get run track of things constantly, so we don't have those red lights, or laptops not able to sign in, or we don't have enough charging stations, or whatever inadequate purposes we have out there to not use the laptop. That, and then that's what I was thinking, because it is a backup to the backup, but it's not a backup to be, I don't wanna say lazy, but it's a backup to just say, oh, I wanna take advantage of the system. And it's the same teachers doing it every day. Or you as a principal just going, yeah, it's okay, go ahead. That's not what, what I was saying either. It's just a fallback in case we have that situation occur. Again, like I said, it's perfectly terrible tonight, our laptops weren't working, what if that was in the classroom?
Well, as a teacher of an online school, uh, whether it's government math, or science, or English, uh, we have a plan B already in place, eh, they still don't use their cell phones. But mine's a scientific journals that you ordered for me, uh, and it's summarizing math, they have the worksheets all set up. Uh, English teachers have the assigned books, because it, it will turn into a nightmare. One, two, three, four, five, my computer's not working, oh, use the cellphone, because now they have the excuse.
But again, they don't have, did, did they get administrative permission from?
Yeah, but in a classroom, you're gonna have kids, I can't log in, and you can't have the principals twenty-seven teachers calling in, hey, three of the students, so it's, as a teacher, we already have it in place that when the, when the computers are down, uh, Plan Bs are put in place, okay? I have biology books, they're doing research on genetics on, on Google. Computers down, chapter thirty-three, genetics, read it, summarize it, you know, go ahead and do your research there. Because teaching online school, I've seen it all, where, mister, my computer's down, I go summarize, oh, it's working now, mister. You know, and just, uh, it's easier just to streamline, cell phones will not be used, there's gonna be outliers, of course. Uh, and, uh, you know, you have to make that decision as an administrator and a teacher at that moment. But they're very far and few and we. I said in fourteen years of teaching on an online school, uh, the computers have been down three, three days out of fourteen years. So, th- they're pretty good, and suppose we got good internet now, and it shouldn't be a problem. So, I would recommend just to streamline it. Cell phones are banned during the school day, after school hours, uh, they can use them. And, uh, the consequences, if these are too extreme, we can stick with, with those. You know, that'd be my recommendation, but principals, I don't know if you wanna talk, wha- what, what do you see on the ground?
Well, I'd like to clear something up before you open up all that. First of all, you were saying right now, you were saying that Mr. Kramer said doesn't have these offenses that listed in his really rough. These things are really consequences. So, the things that you listed here, and he, he does have them, he says consequences of violation. Violation of this policy will result in confiscation of cell phones. Parental notification disciplinary action is outlined in the school's discipline matrix, so all those things, those things are the same, really. I just wanna point that out.
Well, yeah, I think, I think we agreed on that, I agreed on that, I, it's just, again, we, we, we just keep talking about this. Really, I'm so, I had really, me personally.
Well, I'm just pointing out the things that you guys have written there, I'm just looking at what you guys have written, I'm just comparing them, and I'm saying that these are consequences that are listed here, that's all. One more thing I wanna say is that we've already gone over this before, which is using the word prohibition. If you say that you're gonna prohibit something, that means that you're not gonna have that at all. At all, and so Melissa went over this before Dr. Lunderville, talking about use of. And we went back to those words, so that we wouldn't have prohibition, because it's really absurd that later on down here, it says, well, it says mentions that if we take them away, then there's gonna eh, there're gonna be these consequences, that we, how can you say that you're gonna confiscate something that's been prohibited? That's kind of absurd here. So, we can't say we're gonna confiscate something if we said that it's been prohibited already. We can't do that, we have to be right about this wording here. I don't care what you guys want to decide tonight, that's your guys' business, but I'm telling you, we can't mess around with the words here, because we say we're gonna prohibit something, that means we're not gonna have them on campus at all. And so that's not what we discussed last time.
So you're not gonna prohibit as far as after school too, misrumors?
No, just saying that we're going to not allow them to use the phones.
Okay, so. Maybe use the word restriction?
No, well, Dr. Lunderville said last time, the use of, and then you have it here in big letters.
Yeah, it might be helpful if you refer it, um, number twenty-two, um, in the discipline matrix, it's a during school, our students shall not use or attempt to use any personal entertainment or communication device, including but not limited to CD players, which is kind of outdated, tape players, headsets, cameras, beepers, and cell phones. If seen, such devices will be confiscated by personnel, and exceptions may be granted by a supervising adult in an emergency situation. That was, that's what's currently in. No, that's what's currently in, um, that's what's been there all year, um, it's always.
Right, I, I mean, I'm, I'm just, it, it looks like, you know, when you said that, and I'm gonna say this. Principals were walking around a lot more.
Yeah.
Then probably, well, a lot of this wouldn't be there, happening. If you're in the classroom a lot more, if you're walking around the halls a lot more, a lot of those things, and you're doing your daily walks, you're getting your steps in, you're getting your ten thousand steps in, there's a lot of this stuff wouldn't be happening, because once you get that presence, though, you just said, Brad, it doesn't happen because it's a small school, but you know, you get out there, you start walking around, and all the ministers are walking around at least ten minutes a day, different patterns, different schedules, different, everything around, the kids see that. Then you're not gonna have it, and you're not gonna have the teachers abusing it, so I'm not disagreeing with any of this, what you're saying, I was just trying to give a little leeway in case of an emergency type situation, but we wanna absolve that, I'm good with that too. I have no problem with going full-blown, like you said.
So I guess, uh, my question to everybody here, we all agree that the cell phones should be banned throughout the school day? Use the cell phone throughout the school day? Okay, so, seems like we're in a consensus there, now the consequences, should we stick with, uh, twenty-two? Uh, it seems to be.
My concern is just going back to Mr. Kennoy's telling us about the story of that he had to confiscate a cellphone once, and they claimed that he had damaged it. And I, I, I'm sure there's a workaround. Um.
It would be a civil matter at.
It's, hey, I drove my car into the school parking lot, it wasn't scratched, it's scratched!
Well, again, we have to protect the people who have to confiscate, I, I just, it's just a concern of mine, I don't know that it can be massaged out. I mean, I like the, you know, the way it's written, and I, I, yeah, they should lose the phone, I just have some concerns about the person who's going to take that phone, and if any claims are going to be made.
Well, for all this is worth to you, it's phobia, where I am, and they, they do that, we don't have any of those issues at all, they're very strict about it.
Should have done it in the first place.
They lock them up, and they don't have those issues.
I think Mr. Kennoy had, he's something.
Yes, and those are, like I say, we're gonna get outliers. It, it doesn't matter what rule, uh, there's gonna always be out of a thousand confiscation, where in, in the protections, you know, they can, they get the court.
We all say this, then, going back to twenty years ago, when I was confiscating phones, I would also then confiscate it, then I would go to the office, people that were there when I came back to check in, and have a glass of water, or whatever, or bottled water. I'd say, hey, take a look at this phone, make sure it works. So then we were covered, because the person also, there was a second pair of eyes, yeah, it works, okay, great, let's shut it off and put it away. You know, scratches, other scratches, other, if you get, as long as you, you know, you have somebody there, but not try to argue with me.
I, yeah, I think it's something that can be addressed if it.
Yeah, and I'm not disagreeing, Susan, I'm just saying there's ways around it, like you said, that's a way around it.
And that's, that is my only concern with it.
And we do have forms down there where the students there, the period, the time, everything, they sign, I sign, staple, staple.
Exactly.
It's, uh, I said, you, you might have some instances, but, uh, but they're very far and few. But, uh, so, so far, I think we got this degree somewhere around here, uh, cell phones prohibited during the school day, yeah, I think we're good with that.
I'll say, I'll do, I will enforce whatever you tell me to enforce. I don't wanna confiscate cell phones, I just wanna have that on the record, but I will do whatever you tell me to do.
We agree with that, the, the current thing that we have on the books, John, is the confiscate. So that's, that's been this year. So, yeah, whether you did it or not, but it, that's already on the books, and, uh, it's up to the committee that, uh, we keep the current discipline, the way we, uh.
And that would be also, because it is, uh, confiscate, just now, what would be further, I think, how long?
Right.
Currently, I think it's just leeway grounds.
Um, yeah, it just says that, um, during school hours, students shall not, exceptions may be granted, right now, it's, it's, there isn't a set format, I would one thing that we would need to purchase or determine is where, keeping them for a week, I, I mean, I i- if you guys have been able to do that down there, good luck to you, but I, I think of having the parent come and pick them up uh, at the same day is, is safer from a liability standpoint, but I mean, if you guys choose to have something specific, we just need to make sure that there's procedures in place to keep those things locked in a space for a period of, of time, and maybe they do that a certain way that you guys could share, but that would be my, I mean, it's getting taken away, the parent can come pick it up at the end of the day. If that's, either way.
Yeah.
Okay, well, can I ask a question, another comment, be greedy? Um, John, your reluctance to confiscate, is it because of the liability aspect, or, or just?
All sorts of, there's multiple reasons, we have kids that their communication with their family is reliant on their cellphone, we have kids that, you know, that, uh, spend time in Arizona and in Mexico. We have, tha- that is their way of communicating with their families, that, that we don't, there, there's no home phone in many, most houses, like, if you have a house, uh, and landline at this table, raise your hand, I don't. Okay, there you go, it's like, so, that's why, I mean, I, I know that I'm gonna hear, I'm gonna hear from parents, this is the only way I have to communicate with my child.
So, so, excuse me, but I already discussed that. Yeah, I, I had a situation where my mother, I'd already mentioned, had cancer, and the communication came straight to me, we only had a few phones in that school, and still, the message was really. And still, the message was relayed to me. As we have phones in every room now, so that's that's just not true.
Well, I think I think his concern is not true, what happens with how they communicate. You've taken the phone away from.
You, excuse me, Stephen, you can communicate with anybody. You can communicate with your child still. You still communicate with.
Well, if we have their phone and they're in Mexico, they can't communicate with all the school. After school.
Oh, after, about after school. No, after school, they're uh, yeah.
Kid is without a phone.
So the the school, the. The student would probably go to the office and say, can I call my parents in Mexico? They call, and then resolve it from there.
There you go.
What about on Saturday?
I think my comment, I think I can at school, they're trying to stay, John?
Okay, let's go with Mr. Shatter.
I think there's a growing, my my personal sense is a growing um support. The community and and around the state, around the country for for what we're talking about about this. Ban during school hours, and I think the parents um are, I don't know if it's fifty fifty or sixty forty one, but it's it's. Growing in your favor, and I think John's concern, mine, also speak myself, is that you don't wanna turn those people who are supporting you. Against you, not because of the confiscation, but because of the duration. I think if you, the second offense is out for two weeks. I'm glad you reprimanded my child in school, that's fine, but now for the next two weeks, where I can't communicate with that kid. Or on vacation, you know, whatever, whatever. So it seems, if you wanna maintain the support, I I recognize that every other discipline. As long as I'm doing it, is a stair step approach, the ladder approach, we call it. This one seems sort of unique to me, that in order to keep the parents on your side. It could just, you don't have to stair step this one necessarily. If it happens again, your parent is gonna come every single time. And the parent can choose to enforce, one day, two days, you know what, I'm so ticked off at you right now, I'm not going for two weeks, you deal with it. Let the parents escalate that, and I think that in doing so, now the kid is, you know, they'll fight with you all day long. At the home and fight with their parent and say, mom, I'm sorry, I got my phone confiscated again. Let let them handle that. Think what maybe John was trying to say and else, that's my.
Maybe as an alternative, you keep the phone, the child has to come in in the morning for two weeks. Turn the phone into the office during the school hours, and at the end of the day, he can come back, get the phone, so they have it. During non-school hours, but maybe for two weeks, they don't have, the the office has possession of it during the school hours.
And we've done that with students from Mexico, John, uh where they just.
Special accommodations.
Couldn't accommodate uh, couldn't communicate with their parents in Mexico, so they turned it in in the morning, and they picked it up after.
Yeah, that way, if if there's an emergency during the day, of course, you can help it, so, but you're worried about is overnight. Kid might need that phone overnight, so you just keep the, you don't keep the phone twenty four hours, you keep it for two weeks. It has to be turned into the uh office.
And we'd have to have that in policy, I think.
There's a clarification, Steve, what you said earlier about ban, the the public is confused right now. They keep using, even the state legislature uses the word ban, but they don't mean that. They mean, don't allow the child, as Mr. Beat said, to use a phone when they go to school.
And and I think. Reason there's, again, my opinion why. Non educators are supportive of this, is they're recognizing the the social impacts on kids, their inability to communicate, to make eye contact. To shake your hand and so on and so forth. So I think the more we talk about the why we're considering this. Man prohibition, whatever, um focusing on. The wellness of the child is the winning argument. Punishing them for an excessive amount of time. Untouch that argument, in my view.
And and I think that having that latitude with just confiscation allows. Someone like Mr. Canoy to work with a student who lives in Mexico to turn in their phone. We have students like that. I I've had students like that. Where I'm like, all your stuff's on my desk now, like, and they would comply. Um I didn't need administration to do that. But then in another situation, there may be something where this kid has had their phone out multiple times. But because of geographically where they're living or their family situation, he may. Wanna be able to work with them and say, you know what, you're gonna turn your phone into me every morning, by having that kind of latitude. To do that, by by being very specific, it just, it it, I always like try to make sure that. We give ourselves that ability to make, the way it's said right now is, we have no cell phones on campus. If you bring it, we're taking it for one week, like, there's no leeway when we put it in policy that that way. Um, I mean, and you certainly can be specific, I'm not telling you not to, I'm just saying that when you do that. It's the same standard for everyone. I don't care that you live in Mexico, Mr. Beach. It says a week, I'm keeping it a week. That would be the, you know, if you were to. A judge would say like, no, you said a week, you said, you take it a week, I don't care if you have a girlfriend that's pregnant and gonna have a baby, don't care. Like legally, that's what I would say, and I was representing them, they know. So that's just something to think of, think about, and and using the word prohibit, Mr. Ramirez is a hundred percent correct, closes the door. You you don't get to ask for it to be. A special day for you to do your heart rate. It's not, it's prohibited. So, if we leave it a little gentle, then it allows teachers to ask. Permission to utilize for what uh whatever they're being asked.
We're making progress. So we'll inhibit during the school day, uh, I'm I'm fine with what you did. About the consequences as far as the calling the parent, the first offense, and giving leeway to. You know, if they, somebody lives in Mexico, et cetera, uh having the parent come in, the first offensive, so.
You guys just let me know how you wanna word it, because I think there's some wording right now, we need to get rid of like C D players, tape players, I think we should just use like. There are other ways.
We went over those grounds already.
Yeah, it it's, but it's still in their handbook, so I just wanna make sure, we clearly get that in the same. Manner that everything.
You could remember mentioning electronic devices.
And I can change it to to that if.
I think elec- electronic devices with probably the three most sort of examples, which would be cell phones, little iPods.
Even the smart watches.
Electronic communication devices, what I would.
That's what you used.
Yeah, that's a whole different, what about smart watches?
Well, electronic communication device would cover all of those. Yeah, the watches are another thing, they can all.
I don't fucking know what time it is, I'm not fucking anybody.
Yeah, I I I just have a question uh between yours. And uh, Mr. Brad Beaches and and Will Kramer's. I think that's what B V stands for, right? Okay, I I personally like number four, but it's not part of the rules. Uh students shall not photograph. I I know it's illegal to have it anyway. But this just gives a little bit more.
A student shall not record or transmit speech or other communication of other persons without those persons express consent.
I, okay.
I didn't take, I didn't go over from this. I said, follow the matrix that's in place. So everything that's in place.
So like now, Mr. Fanning, if you record someone, um if you record a fight, what what happens, John?
Kids were being suspended.
Yeah, we've been suspending for recording, and and that seemed to have dropped off, we didn't have. Anymore, suspended a few days stopped.
So this means that the students are not allowed to take out their phones with like lunch or passing periods or.
It would, it would be during school hours, students shall not use or attempt to use any personal entertainment or communication device.
During school hours.
Seven thirty to three.
Yeah, seven, seven thirty to whatever, three, three o'clock in the afternoon.
And that's, and that's gonna include now smart watches too.
It's a communication device.
It's a communication.
Should we be specific?
No, I'm just saying, I forgot about smart watches, and now I, that's a whole different situation.
I mean, we could put including but not limited to smart watches, um they also will use um. Computers to communicate.
So can we? Go ahead and write it up, what we discussed, and then uh maybe come back with it. Or do, does it need to be approved?
Fine with everybody? Well, I just have one thing to say, cuz I haven't. I'm just gonna say it straight out, which is, you know, it doesn't matter what, any one of us five right here. We could have the greatest thing in the world, greatest proposal, greatest policy that man ever saw. And as long as it's not gonna be enforced, it's worthless. It is, it's absolutely worthless. So, that's my gripe, is I worked here for twenty years too. Worked at RHS for twenty years, and in all those years, with all due respect, I never saw the the cellphone policy. Ever enforced, ever, and the whole time, we had all kinds of policies. That's what it's gonna come down to again. We could have the greatest policy in the world, that as long as we don't have people that are gonna enforce it, it's worthless. It's just a bunch of words, a bunch of letters on paper. So we get our act together there, we're gonna, this is gonna plague us.
Any thoughts about why it wasn't enforced? I think that that would be what we was gonna discuss. We get, we get our act together, so the first question would be, well, then why wasn't it?
John already. No, that's a great question. Who's gonna answer that? Who's responsible?
I know I had the teacher working at Rurico for fourteen years, so uh, students never use cell phones in my class.
It's not the governing board's responsibility to enforce it.
And that, that, that was each individual teacher.
It's an individual thing for.
Admin can't control, like Mr. Ramirez or Mr. Kramer, or, or, or sell a, they're in your classroom, you have to have that control. And it comes down to the teacher's enforcement at first, and then the administrators coming in, if it's not enforced, to have consequences for that teacher. But, you know, tha- that plays true to to everything, rest code, you know, is it enforced or not?
Exactly.
Uh, fighting on campus, you know, zero tolerance, we following that or?
I had this discussion with you when I was the president of this governing board, and I asked that we sit down, the governing board. Go with you when we discuss this with the public, but we never did it. But even so, we can educate the public all we want, but again. Again, until we enforce this, it's not gonna change anything. Going back to your question, Steve, it's a great question. But I'll I'll say in the defense of the governing board, we're not the ones that are supposed to enforce that stuff. And then when we get involved, that we're accused of micromanaging, and people get really angry at us if we micromanage. So, we're caught between a rock and a hard place, because the state puts us, the governing board, responsible, not the, not your team. Your team is sort of, we are responsible for discipline, as Mr. Kramer has pointed out in the past.
Well, I appreciate for asking, but it wasn't assigned blame anyway, it was from a perspective of human behavior. If it's been going on for twenty years, that tells me there's something out there that is is. I don't think there's twenty years of willful disobedience, either people, the administrators didn't understand the why, but it didn't, personally didn't agree with the why. Or that they were afraid of being blamed by parents and and chose their poison, although, I'd rather one board member mad at me than fifty parents mad at me. But I'm just, if we're trying to solve that problem, I'm not trying to blame anybody, I'm, I think we really need to dig into that. Why do we have twenty years of of disobedience on this?
You you know, and and I don't, I can't speak for teachers in Rurico High School for twenty years. But I can go back to where I was at, and we had teachers that didn't enforce policies as well. So, and and this was twenty years ago. They didn't enforce policies. Phones are being used. One of the teachers, I call them the safe harbor. Because every time we had a kid running around trying to catch with weed or whatever else, we run, we go to that classroom, because that teacher was the big harbor. You know, I mean, there was, the every kid knew where the teachers were on that campus, and if you grab ten kids that were. Misbehaving kids that are getting in trouble, you actually brought him in and talked to him, said, okay, which of the teachers aren't enforcing the policy, they'll tell you. They'll tell you. And then that's why I'm saying back at the principal, why is that? How come you, you know, granted, we had to take care of those teachers. You know, like, but it is, it's gotta be enforced. And if it's not enforced, still gonna have, you're gonna have the, and I'm gonna keep saying it, and you've brought it up, you keep bringing it up, but it's gotta go back to other principles. I think whatever we do, we're trying to do it, so now, we learn our job as board, now it's the responsibility of administration. You know, that this, like I said, Brad, you and I had ninety percent, it's just different wording, but we're trying to get to the same. Agree, you know, there, the end game, you know, the end game is.
But no, I know we can discuss this all night, but uh as long as we got. Okay, got it, recommended and.
And we'll have to bring the handbooks back as well, so we can add all of that.
Cell phone, what was next on the? I do have one on the grading, can we address that or not? You have to clarify, cuz I'm still trying to grasp my head around some, uh, an A equals a four, B equals a three, C equals a two, S equals a one, a D's passing. Uh, but a one is emerging on the scale, on rubric. So that individual, if he's emerging, to me, hasn't mastered that standard. Is that the way I'm looking at it, correct?
There's a skill, the scale is actually a two is passive, two point two, two zero, two two point five. The the decimals were used because that in essence, they use also. Then we have two point six to three, that in essence would be your C. And then three to three point five is your B, and three point five and above would be your A. So the letter grades are determined only at pre-competent masters, and they are shown. At high, so currently nine to twelve, and one of the conversations we had is to expand that to six, six to eight. To just show an average of the learning evidence, so our parents and students can see a mark. So instead of just seeing, and A, the current C, they would have to click into the N A to see. The different standards and different marks for the different standards, so that's one thing that.
I think I got this off the, I know I got it off the computer where it said a one was emerging, and it was developed.
So the scale, yes, the professional scales are.
Now, is that a passing grade?
Two point two and above is the.
Okay, cuz that's a course average for the whole.
On the rubric, it has the D equals a one.
Yeah, the high schools, the high schools should not have any letter grades in their handbook any longer, because we phased them out. So that sounds like it's a typo, John, you need to look at.
Yeah, so that says your D is two point zero.
Okay, you're you're giving a one to a failure, one F?
It makes it an F to a grade, you can't even think of it, you can't even think of these number, uh of the of the scale. In relationship to a grade. The only reason it had to be that way is because we had sophomores, juniors and seniors, who we had to phase out through the transcript process. But the equivalent of an A to a four is, it's not an A. It 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 shouldn't even be. Way to characterize as such, but we had to have something to be able to phase out those transcripts, so. It should just be level one, two, three or four or N A, right?
If I can add briefly to that, is that so it doesn't having a one equals D, that would be what what's called a conversion scale. The task force made a conscious decision that we were not going to be.
Thanks for clarifying. Uh the the last section that I wrote, uh that I was reading about was. Incompletes and NEs, so one of the sentence was. Student has uh ten excuse absences. At the end of the grading period, they can have a incomplete. And then they have ten days past the grading period to redo those assignments to get a passing grade. And then the sentence above that was the NEs, uh if it has NE. Uh, the student can change those grades to a, from a no evidence to evidence. Do they still have the ten days after the grading period to change those NEs? Do they still have the ten days after the grading period to change those NEs, the no no evidence to evidence? Or is it just the incompletes?
It's the incompletes.
It's incompletes.
But they would not get an incomplete. It would be, it would either be a one, a two, a three, or a four. So I think that was inadvertently left in as well. And and.
I thought that was in there in case we had some special circumstance where a student wasn't able to finish the year.
You could, I mean, I would just write it differently so that it's not equating it. Megan can help with that. I think those two areas were pieces that needed to be taken out from twenty-three, twenty-four, Brad, cuz it's it's confusing, right?
Yeah, when I was reading over it. I had my computer up and running, I could find it. That was a little paragraph, it had the first the NEs. You don't want NEs can change it, and then right below was incompletes. Ten days unex- ten days excused, they had the ten day grace period past the the grading period. Uh, when we report cards were due to change to. And put those assignments to a passing grade. So I was just wondering if the incompletes and the NEs have the same uh, knee way as far as the ten days.
Can I just put you know, Mr. President, um, Megan Diaz on on the line virtually, if you wanna. Ask her away and clarify some of this.
Megan?
Be able to uh?
Excuse you, but she doesn't have a.
She's not a panelist. It sounds like that those two areas just were missed.
Word games.
Okay, both of those.
Yeah, just for uh. You know, clarification, cuz I I was a little confused on uh, any easy incomplete. And I know, Mr. Penoi. Where a student might get down with COVID. They have the ten excused absences, uh. January, you give them ten days coming back from school where they can make up that work, change that grade. Oh, we do that, oh, that's fair. The NE, NEs, I was unsure, so.
Yes, we, a teacher doesn't even need to give an incomplete, they. They could allow the students to make up the work and change their grade, even if they're. Even if there was no ex- special circumstances, there's.
Reevaluating their their progress, not giving them a grade, cuz we don't give.
Certainly, yes.
Oh, Megan's.
We can get this cleaned up.
Yeah, like it sounds like it needs to be cleaned up.
Anybody else on the grades? The rubrics? As as a member of the public. Would you be able to understand the rubric or was you need? We do have it online.
I think it's word games. It's a whole different. I'm sorry, you didn't pass, we're saying, oh, no, you're a what? You're exceeding, no. You're emerging, okay, so we're playing word games, but I know you're worried about students' feelings. And so I'm not totally against sparing feelings.
Yeah, no, I don't think it's about feelings, it's a different rule.
Uh, we're we're old school, back, if you got an F, it was a zero, zero credits in college, okay? And so, and then if you got a D, you got one credit, and so it's like. That's the old school, but you're saying that's not good, we wanna go to something a little more. Uh, amiable, make the person feel a little better about themselves.
Trying to go to something a little more specific and and clear for why you got a zero or a D or a or a C. Something you didn't pass doesn't really give you much information, so.
You just change the words then.
No, it's 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 identifying what students have demonstrated they've mastered. Mastering a grade scale is totally different than mastering a standard. I I mean, I can manipulate a grade scale, but I mean. But this is actually, can you do this, John? Show me, yes or no? It's 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 not about.
My father, I told you my story, I got a D in in math. And he put that in my face and he goes, this better never happen again. It all of a sudden stimulated in me, okay, I better get off my seat and get working. And I went and sat in the front of the class instead of sitting in the back of the class, cuz that's where all the. All your socializing was doing, instead of listening to the teacher, I went out and sat in the front seat. And three years later, I got selected to the Air Force Academy. Because my SAT scores showed that I was the top one percent of the entire country. What what made that happen? My dad shoving that D in my face and said, this better never happen again. And then that stimulated me, gave me a whole new, different life. I mean, it's nice to have to be the top one percent of the country in something. It gives you a bit more of a success. Where this seems like it's just moderating it, okay, just try a little harder, but we don't want your feelings to be hurt. And I'm concerned about that, cuz you need to motivate, motivate. Number one thing in schools, motivate.
So to add, just briefly, beat it the task force in a bit, so. The purpose of moving into this, it's a five space learning system, is to move away from the zero to a hundred grades. Zero to a hundred grading system is an equitable practice. Because there's so many gradients of failure. The students is truly based on, let's say you missed the homework, you did poorly in the test, you took classes, you were due.
I've given him a second chance.
So what your father did for you. Our parents are still able to do with that current grading system, right? That that did not go away.
If you didn't have a grading system, my father wouldn't have known I was in trouble. That that D gave my father the clue, I need to take him aside and read him the riot act. If I, if if you had kind of a moderate grading system, my father might not have seen it. It's a time to pull me aside and say, okay, do better.
That's what we're communicating to our families too, so they're aware, so they apparent, I with my son. My my son is sitting at a one point three in the class. I'm gonna sit aside and have the exact same conversation you father.
Okay, as long as that happens, I'm just concerned you're kind of nullifying that, okay?
I think that's, and the only difference is that his son could tell him exactly why he's getting that one point three.
Well, I found out why, I was sitting in the back of the room, talking to my buddies instead of listening to the teacher.
But if I'm, but if I'm his son, I I can say, Dad, I'm I didn't do well on this specific standard. Or I didn't do well on this specific standard, or I need to improve here, I need to still complete this. And I think that that is where the the difference is, it's more of looking at specifically, just like Dr. Lunderville had mentioned, you're looking at specifically. What is it that the student is mastering and where is it that they're lacking?
That's what the grades are about.
So that's, so.
What the grades do. Tell you if you're doing good or not.
Because my, because my mom was was that way, you know, anybody that knows my mom knows that. Anything, anything under, under an A, there were some questions. Right, and so, but my mom never knew exactly what. She she just knew that I wasn't getting an A, she didn't know why I wasn't getting an A. And there's, and that's, that I think's the the difference, those conversations still happen. But my mom knows, and who knows my mom, she knows that's like. John, there's no A, okay? Do your homework, do your work, do what you need to do, but it wasn't, John, okay, you're missing the standard, make sure that we're fixing the standard. I think that's where it kind of targets a little bit more specifically, what? What it, where did.
Well, I'm just saying it has to be a standard, and if you're might, if you're lowering down the standard, how does some someone know they need to do better? Right? I just wanna make sure that you're not nullifying the standards, or you're making it kind of floating standards, you know?
It's the opposite. Because now it's almost impossible to get an A. Be honest, because you have to demonstrate at a very high level that you understand.
That I'm game, I'm game.
So if you demonstrate that to be in that one percent, then then you're gonna get a three.
You have to show us you know it, not manipulate a point system.
And and the the most frustrated students are the AP students. Because now they can't just game the system, because those are the smartest kids that know how to game the system and just take a test. Now I have to actually demonstrate that I learned this, and so I can't game the system anymore.
Our TLA department, from the beginning of inception, has been tracking that. The the potential for grade inflation or grade deflation to make sure they're noticing it in that way. And so, from the very beginning, we've been tracking that, and that's what we should do, which is that it's actually more. Uh, difficult for people to get the higher grades now.
As long as you're having, pushing every student to be all they can be. And I'm game.
Yeah, and I think one of the things that we're trying to do also is, again, not just, is educate the parents, okay? Our community, because like, your father, if your father would have been educated and said, okay, he knows why, what it takes for you to get. A a four or whatever, then if you would have gotten a three, so why do you have a two or why do you have a three? Okay, what standards are you missing? You see now, right now, we educate our parents so that our parents know. Exactly, and then the student will let your parents know. Okay, Mom, well, I'm sorry, I mean, you know, I didn't understand standard, whatever, okay? Then, you know, then we need to get to work on this, okay, how can I help you, or how can I, you know, what is that you need to do in order for you to get? You know, the higher grade or the higher number. I think that's what it is.
Concerned that the standards be there.
Mm-hmm, and they are.
Knows what the standards are. And if you're doing that, then I have no complaint.
Hey, do you understand the grading system or is it still a little?
No, I don't.
So so I think this is where, you know, and that's what I wanted to bring up, we have two members of the public here. And educated individuals. You know, we might need, it's on our website, I know that, maybe have some community events where we can explain this uh, a little bit more thoroughly. But uh, it does take a little bit to wrap your head around it, but once you understand it, you understand the concept and why. And I think the why is uh, that that, what we're losing with the the general public.
I went to school in the fifties since sixty. I could relate to that.
Any more discussion on the grades?
On the grades, but I had to fix it still. Yeah, okay. Thank you, sir. So, while in the high school handbook. Uh, right here where it says extended learning opportunity on page six. It says, this time is scheduled so students may meet with teachers in classes. Well, first of all, you don't meet classes, you meet with teachers. And it's really wordy, all we have to say. Is just simply, students may seek additional help with teachers during this time. That's simple. And I think we should clean that up. Then, on number seven. I also think that we, a lot of this, by the way, Steve would appreciate this, is being written in the passive voice. Some of this stuff could be put in the active voice. For instance, right here where it says assemblies. During assemblies, students must dress and behave appropriately. Of course, you can keep the thing in there, it says see dress code. But I just think some of this thing, some of these things ought to be cleaned up. And I just heard you, Dr. Lunderville, saying that we can bring this back, we have to. And uh, there's just a a several things, a lot of them actually. There's just too many, and I don't wanna go on and on, but I I do wanna say that there are some things that are kind of absurd still. I can tell that nobody's changed really read through this. For instance. I think on every single one of them, it says that board meetings will be held in the Daniel Ford's governing board room. So, I don't think that that needs to be in there, we already had that discussion. And, here's another, we have a date here at CMS, it says that. Early, about early release that we're not gonna meet on. Early release days, we're gonna meet on four, five, I think it is, there's not an attack on you either, Mr. Charles, it's just. An oversight, I think, because you did have the other days correctly. I looked at it and uh, but it says that early release schedule. That you were gonna meet on, or you would be meeting on four, five, and four nineteen.
Can you tell me the page?
Those are on, yeah, I'd have to find it, just a second.
You can tell me page five? Yeah, I think you guys all just need, I I did not.
Says here, those are Saturdays, by the way. Those are an early release date, so I think that has to be cleaned out. Because the public's gonna be looking at this stuff. And uh, another thing on, also in Quatimundi. That says, I wanted to know, I saw that you had mentioned Success Academy. That was supposed to be one of the consequences of the discipline. I don't know what that is. So, Mr. Lovers, but I mean, I think it would be wise to let the public know what Success Academy is. Because otherwise, if you're just assessing what that is, and I mean. They should know, this is a handbook for them.
Pre-reference, this is, so just for the board's reference, these are all PDF documents. But I can tell you that if you check our Google Doc document now, there's there's things that are being updated. Because this, we started updating when the school year ended. And like right now, I'm looking at our version, I have notes from. Longan Shadler, for me, for Musamari, so we're right now on the processor revise, these are not the finalized handbooks from any other sites. So I know that right now, what we were told is, we're reviewing the dress code. And that's why the handbook was gonna be, so we were.
So why do we look at the handbooks then?
These are still.
No, I expected that what you put in the folder, when I said that, was your twenty-four, twenty-five handbook. So if I was not clear in my instruction, I apologize.
Understand that way, to be, I could tell you for CTMS, this is still a draft document that we're working on.
Yeah, there was also one mentioning dogs coming in and. Checking for drugs and other things, but one of them was medication instead. And I thought to myself, well. What kind of medication, because something is legit. So that that kind of stuff needs to be cleaned up. I think we really need, I think people need to really go over these things with a fine tooth comb. It's just like when I first got here, I first arrived on discovering. I remember one night mentioning this stuff and I got criticized. And uh, Mr. Kramer said the same thing, it's like, why is this being brought to us if we're not, you're asking us to look it over and to prove it? Well, then you're asking us to look it over and go over it with it, with a fine tooth comb. And I got attacked for that. I remember that very clearly. Thought, well, why, I think the same thing, why do you bring it before me then? You want me to prove it, unless you just want me to rubber stamp everything. Which I'm not about to do. And you guys know real well.
Anything else, Mr. Roberts?
No, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Francis.
Well, I think there's a conflicting report here. I spent some time looking over the handbooks, and what was the point, looking at the handbook? Should we just given a response that there were drafts? Well, then why were we looking at drafts?
I'll speak, I was speaking for myself, I I did not wanna speak for anybody. I can tell you that CTMS handbook, it's it's still a problem.
I think there was a miscommunication between. We're still a work in progress, uh, this is what's sent out to the board. But I don't know if the other schools, their handbooks might be done.
Well, I mean, I think we're finding other errors, so I highly suggest you go back before the next board meetings. For what we bring back as a final project, because it is on here to approve them, and we're not gonna approve them.
We're not gonna prove it, there are. We there should, should have been finalized.
And I apologize if my instructions.
There's no need to, I'll tell you something, you know, people that say, oh, you're being so nitpicky about every single little thing here. You know, well, we only represent an educational institution, that's all. Of course, we have to be, they're clean, it's all up. It's gonna be provided to the public and they're gonna judge us based on stuff. You don't wanna look like we're like, we're not doing our best out here. It's always talking about the perception that we have that we put out there. We want them to think that this isn't the best app district, as Mr. Kramer said, what's before.
I wonder before the next board meeting if uh, all of us in here look over the policies, if you see some changes that wanna be made. Who would be the contact person to email?
Uh, you you would just email.
Then you would, okay.
Well, that's what I did. Well, my two hours of looking at handbooks was kind of like, we've been doing it. You gotta wait to tell how we got finalized.
No, but did you email?
No, I was gonna bring it up, but what's the point?
I think there's a misunderstanding.
Mr. Kramer.
Okay, I'm gonna go finish mine. Yeah, but the dates, our school years from last year, a lot of that stuff, and I brought that up last year before. That now that you're leaving, who's taking over for all this to go online, as you said, Google Docs, everything's gonna be online. Who's taking, and Steve, you're leaving, so now who's overseeing all that? Who's gonna oversee the handbooks, all the Google Docs and everything for each school site? Who's gonna oversee, cuz last time I had to go to Steve. Who's overseeing it, the each school site is gonna be up to date? We're losing public relations, and we're losing Steve. But in the meantime.
In the meantime, he's still here. Yeah. But we'll have all.
When are you leaving?
One week, okay, in July, who are we gonna contact? Because there's this, there's a lot of dates in there from last year. Last year, there was staff that were no longer here, there's staff on there that shouldn't be here, there's models that are not, are outdated. The other thing that just keeps rolling and rolling and rolling, and I was gonna say, okay, like you said, nitpicking, but. I spent time doing, I guess I, like I said, I'm not gonna do it now, I'll wait till the final versions come through. With the dates, and there was stuff on Rio Rico High School, certainly, early release schedules. And I was sort of, speaking of early releases, I'd certainly like to know the early release schedules when we're getting out. All the dates that we're getting out, that would be nice to have, I think we approve it. Um, yeah, current on your messaging, our messaging online. Uh, early release dates, dates for the right school year. And what else do I have on here? Please get rid of the dang, um, Justin's, what is it, faculty and staff is one word? What is it, what is somebody, one of the folks was using that constantly calling them staff guilty. That's a Jostens word. It's not even in the dictionary.
Just to be cool.
Exactly. Discipline is this, can I? We can move forward? Well, that's, okay. My question's on diff, discipline hearing is uh, short-term suspension of nine days or less. It used to be under our, when we were in the other organization, those were non-applicable. Meaning that if a principal suspended, you couldn't take over, you couldn't take over. Nobody did it. It was set in stone. That's just the way it was. Is that still going to be it? Cause I don't, it seems like it is. Is it?
Um, I, I sent that to um, the trust to ask because it also, it's supposed to say unappealable. Um, for the, for the student, meaning they can't go above the, what's the principle? Anything nine, left than nine days is. Right, we can't overrule it. She told me she was going to get back to me to make sure that the statute didn't change, but my understanding is that they, that, that we need to add that. Because it's not in there.
The waiver, okay, waiver of long, that was, and also do we still use? See, I stole this in two thousand and five because in O'Gallus Unified didn't even do this. And right when I got on the board, I brought this order to O'Gallus and Casey O'Brien brought it right in. Waiver of long-term suspension hearings. Do we still do that? I rarely see anything come across our plates as, that the principal invoked a waiver of long-term suspension hearing forms.
If, if they waive, it typically doesn't come to the board, just the long-term suspensions.
You don't send that to us just to let us know that that person. Yes, yes. And the principal's giving that prerogative. It's not all throwing rocks here, principals. Those are powers that you get. Good power to have. And then um, what else do I see? Oh, I just, I'm going to bring this up because I talked to a couple of young men in our neighborhood. That they were women in the field that they didn't have keys in. Jumping the fence. And I said, hey, can you guys, you know, you're not supposed to be doing this, this, uh, I said, can you do this at the high school? They said, yes, we can. I said, what? They said, oh yeah, we can go into the high school anytime and go wherever we want. I'm just saying that this was just occurred in the last week. I don't know if that's true or they're just lying. But hopefully, we haven't had any kids going into the campus in the last five weeks, just going about playing in the gym and stuff. Cause I know we had that in the past.
We, we have cameras, so.
Yeah, right now, cause I, I help out with the wrestling club. It, it, it is open. They got basketball clinics to go on.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about unauthorized entries.
And we did, we did have. Two students who made that choice and we found out who they were and they are suspended.
Maybe they're the same kids. Remember, there are fences that kids could jump though. There are some. Well, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, you know. I guess we did, I know that, but they said that they were able to get into inside. I'm just bringing that up because it's out in the public and that's, there's no secrets here, is there? So that's my stuff as far as discipline and everything. I just want to make sure we get that. I guess I'll spend more time then on the revised versions or the final versions. Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Okay, anything else? Any other topics? I just have the, the one with the headgear and it might be updated. What, what I read was uh, any headgear. And yeah, I think it's number ten on dressing appearance on the discipline section two. And I would like to change uh, school approved headgear with school mascot logo maybe one instead of. I think that just promotes the school spirit, unity among the students. Instead of having students wearing the blue.
Right now it says headgear must be appropriate and not contain any images or messages. In compliance with the aforementioned dress code requirements. So do you want it to say instead of headgear must be appropriate, that headgear must? What?
Have a school mascot, no allow of school.
No, you want, you want to replace letting them wear anything they want with.
High school uh.
So how do you, how are you? Headgear must be.
Only headgear with school. Logos. Logos is allowed.
If that's what the rest of the board wants.
I think it's a great idea.
We have the resources though to make that available to all of our kids. That's my, like, are, is the bookstore going to purchase those and have them available for sale? Because we don't have a way to tell you, hey Brad, you can only wear Rio Rico Hawk hat. Go figure out how to make one on. Whatever. So maybe we want to toggle and then um, do we want it to be specific?
Or you could say, or nonlogo school colors.
Yeah, like red, black, like it could be school colors or they could purch, purchase one with a logo from.
School colors have got to be allowed.
Are there a lot of do our ASU hats down here?
Well, according to right now.
I, I would go with this, a school logo. Uh, for instance, I was a teacher, our board appreciation, they, I don't know if it's Calabasas or San Gaitano, gave me a little beanie. Had the little. You know, a lot of these schools, a lot of these schools might have hats already. Uh, and.
Everyone's thinking, you guys need to tell them what is.
But we can, you know, we've never provided.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So that's something that uh, should be maybe discussed at the school site, whether you want to. Spray hats or, or make hats. Is the funding available? Can we make funding available? Uh, at, or no hats are allowed at your school.
School colors.
We have to allow hats for um, medical reasons. Um, and I know just given like that our campus. Or is outside giving kids that option, even if they don't have a medical certification, I think is important.
Keep in mind those students that might need to wear headgear for medical reasons and they can't afford to buy a school logo.
That's already in the policy is, is that they, if they have a medical, a doctor's note or a five oh four plan.
It could be any.
That, uh, yeah, as long as they have it medically approved, like uh, I guess we call it five oh fours.
Not have any, any appropriate logos or like that.
Oh, good.
But I, I, I would recommend, you know, schools starting to look at. Letting the students design the, the hats. And we, we wipe this logo with the school colors. We want floppy hats. We want uh, other things and uh, you know, start promoting that school spirit. Cause what I saw at one of the middle schools was they were wearing a hat that had. Uh, Santo Marto or whatever it is. Rock related and if you're not from this area, you think it's a saint. So. And then, you know, some are wearing hundred fifty dollar hats. Some are wearing these cheesy Walmart. If Walmart's out there, you know. You know, that equity portion of it. You know, I can afford something good, you can't. So I think just to create that school spirit. And you want to wear a hat, I'm sure you can come up with enough money to, to buy a ten dollar hat. If not, maybe the school can provide.
For now, could we just say that, that hats should be logo free? So that's how we bring it back with some ideas on how we're gonna have it in the thought.
I mean, this is the ongoing conversation too, so.
What are the school colors?
Um, each school is a little.
But I see black uniforms. Is that, is that Rio Rico High School's colors?
Black and red.
No, gold.
There is red and gold. It says on your, it says on your handbook, red and gold.
Red and gold.
Well, why, okay. Why are black uniforms being worn if it's red and gold?
Black uniform, at some of the school have, have black. Oh, the high school, I don't know.
Athletic uniforms. Again, I'm asking a question because, oh yeah, school colors. Well, is black a school color? Brad is saying we'll wear school colors, but if they're going to differentiate, start out incorporating colors to what their uniforms are. It's not the school colors that they may have on their mask.
And that, and that could be uh, something for discussion with the, the students, the principals, the teachers. On, you know, these are the colors we'd like to be approved. You know, cause I remember in wrestling, I had black and gold.
Yeah.
Used to have that for me, really do the red and red. So it could be an ongoing conversation at the school site and then come back with something.
Again, I only asked was if, was putting stuff in writing.
But that's why.
Or any black and blue?
Well, um.
Ruining gold?
Can I just read it and you guys can come in with it. Headgear may be worn outdoors only unless there is a medical documentation on file. Listing the reason for full-time use. Headgear must be appropriate, not contain any images or messages. And which needs to be rewarded. Not in compliance with the aforementioned dress code requirements.
This is only for students, because I see sometimes staff that monitors the playgrounds, they wear headgear.
Security.
They, they can, they can wear.
As far as I know, it's whatever's in the policy for staff, but I think it should be.
Don't have specified.
We don't, but we can.
I know. I just, I just know that a student's gonna say, how come you can and I can't?
I know for. Most of them are given a school hat, but we don't have it memorialized in our employee handbook. But if we change it for the students, I don't see why we couldn't change it. I mean, it's.
And maybe we, maybe it's a non-issue.
I don't know, but if that's the route you want to go, I just have to update that.
And would color actually matter? Okay, what's it, different colors, Rio Rico High School, black and gold, red and gold, red and black. As long as it has that school logo or the hawk. I think it, it's, it's promotion of the school unity together.
You're still talking.
Well, you can't wear them inside the class.
Cause the way this is written, there's nothing that says you can't wear a school hat right now.
Right.
So, but I think the language states that. As it doesn't have a logo.
It just says headgear must be appropriate. We don't define appropriate.
So you might have some wearing the rager's hat that comes.
So would a rager's hat be appropriate?
No.
Yeah.
Would it be school?
So then you had to. School or school colors.
School colors. So the word only.
Yeah, that word unless, you know, it says headgear may be worn outdoors only. Unless there's a medical upside. In other words, only if there is a medical. Documentation.
That's where it all the time, because some kids wear it in.
Medical issues.
So they can wear it.
That allows them to wear it inside, but every other student.
Take it off and they're not, okay.
So just thinking about the hats, I, I, I almost. I almost go, and I'm just speaking for myself. I almost feel like we have to look at the options to be able to buy the hats with the logos on them. Cause I, I doubt there's going to be, I feel like there's going to be very few families that are going to want to buy hats that are just a single color with nothing on them. It's just not, they're, 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 they're not going to really, they're going to see that kind of, quite honestly, as a waste. And I know the argument is, well, they just don't wear it, but that's not what we're trying to do. So. I think the, we have to, we're going to have to try to find solutions to be able to have the funding to be able to buy hats. Cause I, I mean, I don't have, you know, money to buy, it's hats for every single student on our campus, right? And that's, that's just the reality, but I, from a family perspective, I, I, I don't know how many families are going to buy single color hats.
Yeah, I agree. I agree that. I think the main point, John, I think that you're making is as long as it has your, your school logo, it's still showing that school pride. Color doesn't really play into it. Uh, and I think the students should have input on types of colors mismatch.
Yeah.
Cause the point was just to get rid of the logos and inappropriate, so.
Yeah.
I mean, is that what, that's what we're trying to solve? Like our why is because not everyone's going to know that there's a party. I mean.
Well, you get into a lot of other.
Yeah, there's a million.
Certain neighborhoods are wearing certain hats.
Yes, and for a long time, we didn't allow them period unless they had a medical documentation, which is an option. But I know, living in Arizona, that they try to promote wearing them.
Like I saw the football coach online and he had his little red, I think it's a red floppy hat with the little hawk up there. I thought that was awesome. I would have thought differently if he had a Raiders hat.
Just going with uh, my job aside too, I think it's, it's, they'll be careful with the word because it is difficult for the children to. If we say right now, we're banning the hats, unless it has a logo, but yet we still have a solution to, or provide them that. Think like we're jumping the gun and not able to provide that for them, but. Yeah, no, yeah. I think it's hard right now.
So Brad, I would, I would like to propose that we add this as, right now it's under prohibited attire, which doesn't make. As Mr. Shadler pointed out, so um, where it says religious attire, I would just move headgear to be. And then um, I'm just gonna clean it up a little bit and then you guys can come back and decide how you want it exact. Once.
Yeah.
Can I just say one more thing? And then maybe, you know, you're talking about, because the cartel are talking about that saying, I ask, I don't know what that looks like. But maybe it might be easier having, okay, here, add pictures of what these things that they should not wear. Just getting rid of it.
Yeah, it just comes into, in my view is. I remember when I was in high school, Monte Carlo had their gang. It was red, blue colors. And there was tension on campus. And so you got kids coming in with, you know, maybe this is the little Raider Nation here. The other neighborhood down there. Uh, it just doesn't promote that unity in school that we want to see. At the elementary, I don't think we're going to see it. At the middle school, maybe, well, I did see it at the middle school. At, at the high school, for sure, you start getting different groups. Uh, so you know, just streamlining it. The color scheme, I, I don't really care, but it should have a Rio Rico Hawk. A, a little funny panther or down there, whatever the San Gaitano. Cheetahs. I love that, yeah. But uh, I think we should go in that direction, you know, just to build that unity. Like I said, I got one of those beanies and I'm, I'm waiting for the weather to change and. That worked. That's just my thought, I mean.
Yeah, no, I think it's.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody?
But then tonight, we will not be approving the policy change or handbooks. We'll go back on the twenty fifth.
And are, are they going, are you, Ms. Lunderville, are you going to be posting?
Yeah, we'll send it to you.
Yeah, and all the updates from everybody so that we can read them again.
Yeah, and then if you have recommended, uh, like Mr. Ramirez, all this stuff that you've recommended, if you want to send that email to us would be great. So that we can make sure that we review all those items. So any, any items that the board wants us to review or change or update in the handbook? Uh, please send that to me and Dr. Lunderville and then we will disseminate to the principals for their.
One comment on that, Mr. Redu who is uh, as Mr. Lopez stated, they were working on these changes, there was a miscommunication. Should we wait till they rec, they submit their changes, then they.
I think you should send George it just because that'll give us an opportunity, add their working on it. Uh, to, to change it, because they may not see that change even after they do their draft or their final draft. So, so this way, uh, because we want you to be able to approve. I mean, that's, that's, so, so sending your information to us and then. We'll get it to you um, again before, so that you can review one final time before we approve.
Yeah. Minus the grades.
Yeah, and then the other thing is again, like tonight showed that we need to, again, have parent meetings, all those communications. And you know, I think uh, like Mr. Ramirez and I did the uh, uh, our interview, which we did talk about all these issues, which I think was, was good. You know, but I know you'd like to, to do even a forum, you know, which is fine with that as well. So I think that was. I think the interview uh, went out and educated a lot of parents on some of the conversation that we're talking about, so. And we'll get back to the.
Go back to the tables.
And grab some food before. And grab some food before.
Did I need to use the restroom?
Grab some fruits and cookies.
Oh, yes.
It's the Alabama, yeah. I wanna be professional baseball. They went, tried out for the. You have to have a. There's standards out there. Many years before. So, so this is where the standards come in. Standard would say a four is a ninety-two to get you into pro. A three is gonna get you into double A. Parent, you would know this exact standard.
You understand, right?
Yeah, I was concerned that you weren't. No.
No, and that's, that's when. Look at either educators that, this this rule, because it is a paradigm shift. And but once you understand it, it's actually very specific, you know where you're spelling that.
As you know, what the child knows what they have to do to succeed, that's what we want our children to do.
Exactly, and to get a four, you have to be able to teach it. You have to be able to teach it, you know, that's why it's so difficult now.
Whatever the standards need to be, you need to make sure they understand. You know, I thought you were easing on the.
Oh, no, no, no. Like I said, you know, now we need to. That's it, you know, so that the parents understand what it is that we are.
Why would I understood? I didn't know that. Plenty good.
What a bitch it's. Well, my, my brother was drafted three times, so.
You're the one that got me.
High school. Second round, then he was drafted seventh round, then the twelfth round. So pitched in two college world series.
You did, yes. He was. Ninety-two mile an hour pass.
Ninety-seven. He's Coach Brock's last recruit.
Oh, Brock. I'm said, I was on his. From the team, but I was on it for six months.
Brother was his last recruit. My brother pitched in the world series that when he died.
Pass one, oh, I'm sorry to hear that. He had a ninety-seven mile an hour pass ball, but then you understand. Standards.
Very cool picture in there. Name my brother in in the world. I sat with Coach Brock. Drafted.
He cut me from the team. To have a practice game. So I, the the other thing, I didn't have. We're still. So I looked at Brock and I said. You don't want me pick. Shot him out for five innings. I'm gonna get back on the agenda real quick. Uh, number three, information discussion action, subject A, policy five, that's.
We're actually in the consent agenda, Mr.
Okay, any matter on the.
Yeah, because uh, because we are not going to uh, uh, approve anything tonight, so we're skipping through the content.
Any matter on the consent agenda will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed as a regular agenda item upon the request of. Board member. Uh, does anybody want anything removed?
Beach, I'd like to look at number three, please.
And the other removals. Three, alright, so uh. Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with number three.
Uh, so moved second.
Then uh. Second, any kind of discussion? In favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Nay, eyes have it, motion carries. Number three, Mr. Kramer, you have.
No, thank you, Mr. Beach, Mr. Verdugo, I believe you brought this for us, correct?
Correct.
And I think we got an email on that, correct? I wanted to just get some information on that, that's why I kinda did my homework and. During the year in ESI employment, correct? When I was doing, doing the research, cause I forgot about what ESI, I didn't forget, but I didn't. I got all my facts straight. ESII employees are employees of ESI, not the school district they work in. ESI employees, RW two employees receive all their pay. And benefits through ESI, not the individual district. Correct? So you were asking then to transfer some of your benefits from ESI? They're not our.
But I I checked with the attorney and that was the recommendation.
Well, we didn't get anything from the attorney. So then I.
You you got the agreement that, that I drafted with the attorney.
What attorney said?
Uh, Denise.
She signed it?
She didn't sign it, but she assisted in drafting of that. Agreement. No, she did not sign it.
No, 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 I.
She did not sign it, but she assisted with the drafting of it, of the agreement.
I had said that it was in the email, I'm sorry. I apologize.
That she. Denise banking.
No, not Denise banking, Denise low bread.
Denise low bread signed off on it.
She is.
That was in the news that she signed off on this.
No, I'm telling you that that was the agreement that I sent to you that.
Alright, so with that said. And under our board policy. States on policy four, three oh two of leave. That accumulated vacation. Can only be up to thirty days, eligible administrators, and no time should there be more than thirty allowable vacation days per calendar year.
I'm I'm not a regular administrator. Individual contract. I'm the only employee of. The board.
So I'm just bringing that up and then I started thinking on a personal note, you know, on this. So you're asking to get another eleven days on top of your thirty days, it's twelve days, so you're asking for another twelve days. Of the thirty days you're getting this year too. Correct?
No, the the next year.
Right, for. Once you become a school.
That I, that I didn't earn this year that I didn't use.
From ESI, not through the district.
Either way.
Well, no, yes, I.
I didn't take the time off, so if you want me to take the time off, I will take the time off.
Well, I'm just.
I'll I'll be off tomorrow for the rest of the month.
Whatever you're saying, I'm just trying to bring up some clarifications.
I'm giving you the clarification, I presented that to you and I gave you the agreement that was written up.
But I didn't know it was written up, cause it didn't say. So like Denise, that she wrote.
I told you, I conferred with Denise to, and that was the recommendation.
But this is, and the way I say this is an addendum to your contract, you're adding more vacation days.
No, I'm not adding, it's it's days that I've already earned that I didn't use.
Through ESI, a different company.
So.
It's not school district, you're not a school district employee, that you're, it's a company over there. You're a contractor.
Yes.
Days that you wanna get from the district.
Higher two. Yes, and and I didn't use them.
Right. So that's what I'm saying is I didn't get the information from her, I didn't get anything to talk about it, I don't know if you were in the negotiations as a. With lawyer. You were.
It's between us and I conferred with the attorney to make sure that it was.
Or president wasn't involved. That's my belief, I mean, I I've seen, you know, where a lot of vacations, people lose vacations because they move there. Or they transfer and we were only, and now we had, I forgot about the leave that. Everybody, as far as teachers and principals, they're frozen at sixty days. Even if they may get twenty years in. So, I mean, that's our current policy.
Frozen at sixty days.
I was on the contract.
I am frozen at sixty days.
No, for returning teachers, your leave buyback is up to sixty, as board governors have been suspended. Right.
Buyback, yeah.
But that's for teachers and principals, not you.
No, and me as well. That's what we negotiated in the contract. Because again, I negotiate directly with you. As the board.
Right, and that's not in your contract. In thirty days either.
A vacation.
Alright, I'm just trying to make it clear that ESI is separate from the district. And you're asking us to give you eleven days, added twelve days. To your vacation on top of the thirty.
Yes.
Correct?
And not on top of the thirty, on what I've already earned, I'm asking to be able to defer from ESI to next fiscal year.
Earned with the district or ESI?
Earned with ESI.
Okay.
Days that I earned as a, as an employee of ESI or working as a district. Hire, because even though ESI still work for the district. They're a third party.
Okay, and my statement is, you bring in twelve, wanna bring twelve days in. On top of your thirty days.
For next fiscal year, I'm deferring, and again, to be used as one time with, that I didn't use this year.
Yeah, I'm just, again. I didn't get the information from the attorney, I didn't get a chance to, I had. I'd asked for this.
You got the agreement from the attorney. The agreement that I shared with the board, that's the agreement. That's the, that's information.
You get it from, signed from her?
Signed, it's 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 the agreement.
So you knew it was from her?
It certainly looked attorney.
But did you not, I'm not, but you're shaking head that yes.
I honestly can't tell you if I remember.
What I'm being again is, I'm just bringing up information that I have. And you're contracted employee under ESI. That's my information I brought up. And I wanted to bring that up because I think, you know, it's kind of. A wording of yours and wording of how you want it and Denise, I'm sure I thought should have contacted the superintendent or board president. Something in that matter, cause this is a contract negotiation, you have more days to your contract. Well, that's the way I look. You wanna come back with it and with her in there?
Come back, because there's no time to come back. So either you, we do it tonight, or that's fine, I'll just take the rest of the month off.
I don't know, I I I'm maybe a lone ranger, so I'll go with that. Okay. All I have to say, Ms. Moby?
I was just trying to check and come up with. Cause I have it here if you wanna see it. I know it's there, huh?
Yeah.
It's there. And the thing is that it's not, the way, okay, the way that I interpreted is that. You're good, you wanted to take, you know, the seventeen to the twenty eighth, which was for this fiscal year. And the twelve days are for next.
Either way, I'm losing days because even the twelve that I am asking for, it doesn't equate to the thirty-one that I'm still.
In other words, you're you're, yeah, you're giving up.
Either way.
Either way.
But you're getting paid ten days from ESI.
Correct.
That's all they gave you.
That's all, that's all we negotiated in the contract.
Why didn't you negotiate with them to get the rest of the days to get paid?
Because that would be, a-again, I don't wanna get paid, I wanna use the days. Because I'm not gonna to to, because the district's gonna have to fund that anyway. So I'm trying to use days that I earned. And if you want me to go back and ask them to. And and it puts a financial burden on the district and utilize.
It was written into the budget, it was a part of the contract.
Yeah, but again, I'd rather use the days than than try to. Get money, more money from the the district, cause that's not what I'm trying to do, I've never been about that portion. I mean, that's why my salary's frozen.
Now again, I'm not.
My salary's frozen for the next three years.
I'm not bringing anything other than what I just brought up. I'm just trying to stick on what's this right here.
Yeah.
Not intangibles of anything else.
Yeah.
No, what did she say?
Just a motion to approve or disapprove.
I approve.
Oh.
I'm sorry, did you make a motion? Second.
Well, I think we're still, we're still.
You have discussing after that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Or did before.
We can discuss.
Okay, so there's a. Motion in a second, any further discussion, Ms. Foskes?
Uh, no, I just agree that, that I I do understand the way it works, okay, and I agree that. That he's entitled to those days, so I totally support you. A hundred percent.
Mr. Ramirez. I have nothing to say on this show. Okay, my only thing is, uh. Contract is a contract. And this could be brought up in a future, future topic on board agenda, whether. We should. Add more days, carry over days, compensation for days. But I think this is something that maybe we should. Uh, do for a future uh. Agenda item. And if I'm reading it correctly. And I think I'm following what Mr. Kramer's saying. Is that you're given thirty days a year, thirty days a year, thirty days a year. And that that's, that's your contract. Uh, we wanna make a one-time approval to carry twelve days over. On on top of the thirty days that you're gonna be getting in the next uh, next year, okay, so.
That I haven't used.
Yeah. And. It goes back to. I just lost twenty days when I was at Novalis, okay, yeah, they. They didn't pay me for them, I tried to give them away, I could only give away three, so I tried to use them all up. Like Dave said, all in June. But I I was put in a very similar situation, and you know, this is my contract and and this is. Uh, what I signed. So, you know, we gotta think of it as that way. And uh, maybe bring it up in a future uh, board agenda item as far as a discussion on all of. All employees as well as superintendent Verdugo. So, that's just my food for thought.
What do you want to do then, table it or?
We can make a mo, he doesn't wanna table.
Table because there's no time to use.
You need a call.
So, all is in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay, motion, uh, fellas, carry. Uh, subject A, release of contract for Shannon Hall. Any discussion?
Make the movement, I make a motion that we go to executive session.
Okay, there's been a motion to uh, go into executive session. Right here, a second.
Second.
The motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 They're now in executive session.
All right, Judy, your curtain pass.
Motion to reconvene to regular session of the Santa Cruz Valley Union High School District, number thirty five, go to the boardroom.
Uh, so moved.
And motion and a second, all in the favor, say aye.
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 Aye. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, all in the polls say nay, eyes have it, motion carries. Okay. So, subject A, release of contract for Ms. Shannon Hall.
But the recommendation is to release Shannon and also, uh, waive liquidated damages.
Okay. Ms. Wobin, do you have anything?
I just want to thank Shannon for all the. Great initiatives that she created for the district, and it has been a pleasure to work.
Same thing, I mean, we're gonna miss you so much, but, um, you know, it's a good opportunity for you, for you, it's a time for you to grow. And, you know, families first, and we need to look out for number one. And, um, I know that you're gonna be around and everything, but you're gonna be sorely, I mean, we appreciate everything that you've done. Um, and we wish you all the best. Thank you.
Yeah, certainly, congratulations on your, your move. The fact it is that it's going to be better for you in sense of. Enjoying as we said, and certainly for you, with your family. I got thrown off a bit by having this hall here, because I wasn't really thinking clearly and say, what, Shannon Hall, that's why I said teacher. So, certainly, whatever, that's great Shannon Hall. Thank you.
Mr. Ramirez?
I want to thank you for all the things that you did, when I was a. Somebody. I'm very grateful, I'm sure. Speak for the entire board saying that we're inevitably grateful for all that you did. And I wish you all the luck in the world and the future, and God bless you.
Pretty much what they said, Shannon, uh, thanks for all you've done for not only our district, but, but our community, you're very involved. Appreciate that, and, uh, yeah, good luck on your new, uh. Uh, new job, I did try to protest by going on a hunger strike, but, uh.
No.
I went past the In-N-Out and the Double Double, animal fries. It was short lived, but, uh, thank you for everything that you've done and, uh, good luck in your future endeavors. Okay, so, uh, motion to release Ms. Shannon Hall from her twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five contracts. And waive liquidated, liquidated damages in the amount of three thousand.
So moved, second.
Then, uh, motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, eyes have it, motion carries, this meeting is adjourned.
Um, I didn't see items for future agenda on here, we weren't doing that.
It might have been.
Not, not, not today.
Not today.
In comparison with, uh, Mr. Beach, we tried to streamline it.
Or board reports either.
As we, we streamlined it because of the study session.
All right, this meeting is adjourned at seven oh four.